The Jackson Public School Board Meeting is now called to order. Board members, we have four members present. We have three members in the boardroom and Ms. Letitia Johnson is on the phone. And therefore, we have a quorum. Dr. Jean Hairston is not able to be with us tonight. Mr. Figures and Ms. Hillier will be joining us momentarily. We have all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Mrs. Thompson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have all had an opportunity to review the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the September 6, 2022, regular board meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Thompson has moved. Dr. Luckett has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Now, we're on the superintendent's report. Dr. Green.
Thank you, Dr. Sevak. Good evening, board members, to our Team JPS and all of our community members who are joining us. We'll begin, as we typically do, with our highlights reel from the instructional television team.
To prepare our 2022-23 graduating seniors for the next step in life, Jackson Public Schools hosted the annual Senior College Fair this past Friday at the Environmental Learning Center. The event provided a wonderful opportunity for seniors from across the district to meet with recruiters from colleges and universities from across the state and beyond.
I've been to almost every college today. It's been a very fun day. I've been talking to people. I really was very happy to meet today.
It was an exciting day for scholars to learn about college applications, financial aid, scholarships, student housing, and much more, helping to ensure these eager young minds have a successful journey along the path toward higher education. Special recognition goes to Executive Director of Innovative Strategy, Dr. Samisia Stokes. Dr. Stokes is one of 19 after-school leaders from across the country selected to participate in this year's White Riley Peterson After-School Policy Fellowship at Furman University. Dr. Stokes will have the unique opportunity to gain real-world understanding of the art and science of sound policymaking for after-school and expanded learning, a key ingredient needed for the educational success of scholars. Congratulations, Dr. Samisia Stokes. And tee-off time for scholars participating in the 2022 JPS Fall Golf Program at the Pete Brown Golf Facility. This free five-week group golf lesson program, available for JPS and middle and high schools, allows participants to learn the fundamentals of golfing from the pros. PGA member Carrie Ray, Recreation Manager at Pete Brown Golf Facility, conducts the program. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at www.jackson.k12.ms.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools, on Twitter at JPS District, Comcast Channels 18 and 19, and YouTube at www.youtube.com/JPSITV.
Thank you, team, for those updates. First, board members, I want to thank everyone in the Jackson community for reaching out to us, various members of our JPS team, and supporting us during our city's recent and continuing water crisis. As you all know, water pressure has been restored to our schools, and we're thankful for that. And our scholars have returned to school buildings. And even though the pressure has been restored, we're no longer, and we're no longer under a boil water notice, we have continued to provide boiled or provide bottled water for our scholars and staff. Just another note on, of thanks to, we, you, board members, you may or may not be surprised by this, but we've received calls and texts and emails and treaties from folks near and far. And when I mean far, when I say far, I mean many states away, up north, out east, out west, folks from all, further south, from all over the place, offering water and just reaching out to try and see what they could do to support us. And so, we're very thankful for the support that we've received, for all of our community partners who've worked alongside our Team JPS to ensure that our families and even some of our team members got what they needed during, you know, during this time. Also want to thank, give a special thanks to Ms. Thea Faulkner, who, along with several others, Chuck Jackson and other members of our operations team, who ensure that all of these huge, huge donations, pallets of water, many pallets of water, cases of water, that the logistics around those distributions that they happen. And so, again, we just want to give a huge thanks to all of our team members and all those who care so much and so deeply for Jacksonians. At this time, I do want to invite Mark Rowe, our Executive Director of Child Nutrition, who will join us and provide some updates and clarify some of the safety protocols that we are using for both preparing water, I'm sorry, preparing water, preparing food, and providing drinking water to our scholars and team members. Come on up, Mr. Rowe. I want to thank you too, and your team, for all of the flexibility and just for your leadership and supporting through this time.
Thank you very much. Greetings, Board President, Dr. Sevak, board members, Superintendent, Dr. Green, Team JPS, community members who are here with us. Thank you for allowing me just to spend a little bit of time with you to talk about some of our process that we go through when there's a boil water alert, or some of the things that we did during the crisis. So, we're notified by the City of Jackson when there's a boil water alert, and what we do, we immediately jump into our boil water procedures, put up signage in the cafeteria, do not use signage, so we make sure that we don't use any equipment that would be kind of productive to what we're doing, on machines like ice machines, water fountains, dish machines. We boil water for hand washing and sanitizing cooking utensils, and we put sanitizer out in the kitchen on the serving lines for folks to sanitize their hands. We also access an inventory that we keep in our child nutrition warehouse and bring that water out for drinking purposes during that time. For food prep, we're very intentional about our menu during the alerts. We adjust our menu to only serve grab-and-go items like pizza, hamburgers, sandwiches, things of those nature, things of those nature that don't require water for cooking. We stay away from mashed potatoes, soups, and salads, things that require water to prepare. We use more canned fruit. We keep an inventory, as I said, we keep an inventory of water in our warehouse. We currently have 56 pallets of water, bottled water, seven pallets of one-gallon bottled water. During the crisis, along with partners in education, we were able to push out water to schools on a routine basis. And for our future plans, we've delivered 604-gallon containers with pumps to our schools. They're in place at the schools for the next bottle water alert. We already have water in schools. We don't have to pivot and move. We can just continue to flow. Central World Kitchen has also delivered portable tanks. They delivered 650-gallon tanks to elementary schools, 1,000-gallon tanks to middle and high schools. We're currently working with the Health Department and local plumber to install those tanks to also have additional portable water in place for drinking and cooking for the next boil water alert or crisis. We plan to install, pretty quickly, the five of those tanks in testament schools, you know, to make sure we work out all the kinks, and so we're in place for the next boil water alert or crisis. That's kind of a brief synopsis of what we do when there's a boil water alert, or some things we did to prepare during the crisis. Do you guys have any, do you have any questions?
I do. And this question actually may be for Dr. Green, it may be for Mr. Rowe. I mean, specifically about water and water filters. I know we've gotten some questions, some offers of water filters for the district. One thing that I've heard is we do have some filters, but they may not be, anyways. So, if you could provide an overview of the status of just our capacity within the district to filter water and/or things that we would need to consider to accept an offer of that nature.
Great question, and thank you for the question, Dr. Sevak. I'm going to ask Mr. Burke, our Chief Operations Officer, to speak to that.
Good evening, Board, President Sevak, Dr. Green. Just real quick, to your question about filtration, we are looking at that as a solution. When that was proposed to us, the concerns I have about filtration is, when we talk about filters, a lot of people just think of the things we put on our sinks at home, in fact, to filter out minerals. The concern there is, can we find a filtration system that will filter out bacteria and those types of things? The reason why filters are not, why we're always on boil water notice is because filtration that's commonly and readily usable and purchased from Home Depot and stuff like that is not of a quality that would pass muster with the Department of Health. So, we will continue to look for some solutions related to that, but right now, there's no quick off-the-shelf filtration system that we can purchase, if that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding our water protocols?
No questions, just grateful for the Omen's effort around this work, and good job, team.
Just want to underscore again, you know, the logistics around this effort, it was, and I wasn't the one ripping and running across town and, you know, texting furiously to make sure that all the pieces were coming together. And so, really, really proud of the work that Mr. Rowe, of course, Ms. Faulkner, other school leaders, I mean, so many people had to lend a hand to help to make it happen, let alone all of our partners around JPS. So, again, a huge thanks, and thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Board members, each year, the United States observes National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October the 15th. And it's by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America. And the national observation began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting September 15. Little, well, actually, I don't know if this is a little-known fact, but one thing you may not know, as we're thinking about Hispanic heritage, we typically think of Brown versus Board of Education as the, well, it is considered the landmark Supreme Case Court that ended racial segregation in schools in 1954, but it was not the first federal case to take on the issue of segregation in schools. Eight years before the Brown versus Board of Education case in 1946, the Mendez family, along with other Mexican-American families in California, won the first federal court case ruling that segregation of public schools was unconstitutional. And unlike the segregation of African-Americans in the Jim Crow South, segregation of Mexican-Americans in California wasn't dictated by law. But starting in the 1920s, when waves of Mexican laborers arrived to work the citrus groves of Southern California, California communities began to enforce their own de facto segregation system. And so, Jackson Public Schools invites all of our scholars and families to join us in honoring the important contributions and the cultural aspects of generations of Hispanic-Americans who have positively influenced and enriched our nation and society. And for a list of Hispanic heritage activities and learning opportunities, please visit our website at www.jackson.k12.ms.us. And our board members, you may or may not realize, we are already halfway through the first term of the school year. Right. Already through the first term, the first half of the first term. And given all the challenges and obstacles that we've had to face already this year, I thought it would be a good time to invite one of our good friends, a member of our team, to join us and share a few words of encouragement. This particular educator has a special gift for reminding us all of, reminding all those around her that even in the midst of the storm, we can still have joy. And so, at this time, Principal of Van Winkle, Van Winkle's Early Childhood Center, Ashanti Barnes, will join us and share a few words.
Van Wonderful.
Van Wonderful. That's exactly right. So glad you know.
I'm so excited to be here, so to the Board, President Sevak, and our beloved Superintendent, Dr. Green, our wonderful senior leadership, the executive cabinet. My purpose here on today is to just really highlight and uplift and undergird the fact that the decision to move back into the school buildings, it was the right decision. And it was the right decision because school is more effective when you're in the space. We are able to now return back to fully implementing the strategic plan where we're offering our scholars a strong start. And we typically ring, you know, ring that bell or sound that alarm for our early learners, our pre-K learners, our kinders. But the same is true, we want to give every scholar a strong start in the school year that they're now rising to. And so, with that, we're able to better champion innovative teaching and learning. We're in the space where we can be together and love one another and learn together and grow together, feel each other, and that helps us to have, to build these talented, empowered teams. I hope you're feeling the strategic plan here. And so, what that does is it translates to these joyful learning environments where our scholars feel valued, they feel that they belong. This is a place where it has been, it's been set up where it's conducive for their well-being, just raising up the whole child. Yes, their academics are important to us, but also their physical ability, their social, emotional learning. It's just a good thing that we're back in the building, and don't get it twisted, there is a culture of accountability and excellence. We're held to a higher standard, but I am of the mindset that if the bar is raised, we'll rise to the occasion every time. And we are striving, and we're growing, and we're learning together, and it just makes good sense that we come on back home. So, we're still looking for those scholars who are, you know, have kind of drifted away. We need them to come on back home because we know what we can offer to our scholars. We know how we, we're making plans to make their lives better. It is our good pleasure to enrich the lives of others. We take this really serious, this is like serious business. And so, to be able to stand in a position with so much influence and know your calling, your lot in life, it is a pleasure, it is an honor to be able to love our kids up. So, you made the right decision to have us back and to keep us, do everything that you've done to keep us in the vein, because I'm telling you, teaching and learning is happening. Our children are growing, they are thriving, they are feeling welcomed and loved and warm, and they feel like they are a part of the culture. They are the culture. You did a good thing, and we trust you, and we commend you on taking risks that are for the greater good for the majority of those that are impacted. So, keep on doing what you're doing. We got your back.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'd just say, thank you, Dr. Barnes. And I would just, the only thing I would amend to what you said is, we made a good decision.
We made a good decision.
We, yeah, I think you said you, which, we appreciate the accolades from the board member, but we can't do anything without all of you and y'all making the decision to show up every day to teach our children under what other people would say are some of the most challenging of circumstances. So, we did it, we did it, y'all did it, and just thank you for those words of encouragement and that Van Winkle program is one of our pride and joys. We brag about it all the time, so just keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ashanti Barnes, we appreciate you. Board members, we get this consistently. This is, this is the light that shines from Principal Barnes, and we just appreciate her skill and knowledge as an educator, but also the love and the spirit that she brings to the work, and challenging all of us to bring the same. So, again, thank you. So, moving on, board members, to create and sustain a culture of excellence, it's important to celebrate staff members and to foster a culture of recognition, recognition. Each month, we ask team members to nominate other members of our team for their leadership and for their exemplary work. Tonight's superintendent's Apple Award recipient has continued to exhibit our core values of excellence, equity, growth mindset, relationships, relevance, and a positive and respectful culture. At this time, I'm going to invite Elementary Division Two Assistant Superintendent Ms. Woody to join us and tell us more about our wonderful team member.
All right. Good afternoon, good evening, everybody. Dr. Sevak, Dr. Green, board members, and to everyone that's here, I am so excited to recognize outstanding educator who has been selected to serve on the Barksdale Reading Institute Parent Academy Focus Group. The goal of this course is to ensure parents and caregivers understand what kindergarten readiness is and why it matters, what it looks like and how to tell when their child is ready. The focus group will give parents and caregivers the tools to help their child build these essential readiness skills. Also, this educator has been selected to participate in the Mississippi Literacy Leadership Network, an exclusive literacy network for districts and school administrators. The purpose of this network is to provide K-5 district and school districts the opportunity to collaborate, learn, and problem-solve with others in like positions, as they work to improve literacy outcomes through the effective implementation of school literacy action plan and high-quality instructional materials. It is none other, and you've heard all these wonderful accolades, about Principal Ashanti Barnes, Principal of Van Winkle Early Childhood Center. At this time, let's welcome Ashanti Barnes.
Ask, was it a trick? No, we actually, we actually really did want to hear from you, but it just kind of worked out, and we realized that we would be honoring Ms. Barnes this evening. It's always my pleasure to honor our team members, and very soon, we will be cycling through more of our amazing scholars, to put them back in front of you and make sure that we're aware of all the really cool things that they're doing and how they're showing up and showing out on a daily basis. So, with that, I want to just thank you, board members, for this time, and I turn the meeting back over to President Sevak.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Green, and congratulations again, Principal Barnes. I'm not going to say we were tricked too, but it was great to celebrate that moment with you. Do we, I don't think we have any public comment, board, so we'll move on to our information-only items for board member reports. I do have some good news, board members. Dr. Jean Hairston has agreed to serve another five years with the Jackson Public School District. In her first act, she's not here with us to celebrate her tonight, in her new term, but she's been confirmed by City Council. So, again, I just thank all of you for your service and dedication. I believe every board member, with the exception, well, almost every board member who was appointed at the time of the turnaround has taken on another term. And, Dr. Green, I really think it's a statement of your leadership and the extended team and what you all are doing and making happen here in the city. We want to be a part of that, too. And so, I just want to thank the board again, just for what each of you do to bring stability at the governance level, to make everything we celebrate in here possible, in good times and in bad.
Here, here.
So, with that, we will move on to our review of policies, and Attorney Moore is going to walk us through the policies under review.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Sevak, board members, Dr. Green.
Good evening.
All right. The Office of the General Counsel is recommending that the Jackson Public School District's Board of Trustees review the following recommendations related to the amendment and deletion of these policies. ABC testing, AEAA/GADR, paid legal holidays, AFA/EBAA, emergency closing of schools procedures, BBBCB, school board members' visits to schools, BBF, evaluations of consultants, independent contractors, and service providers, and BBF administrative consultants. Have any questions?
Board members, are there any questions?
I don't have any questions, but on behalf of Dr. Hairston, our Policy Committee Chair, we had an excellent Policy Committee meeting recently, and just Attorney Moore and the whole team are doing really great work, and excited to see this, we're keeping this moving down the line, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you, Attorney Moore.
Thank you.
And if I may add.
Please.
She actively participated in the conference today, so she represented Jackson Public Schools quite well. Thank you, Ms. Hairston.
You're here. Thank you, Ms. Hairston. And Attorney Moore, just again, there is, I know there's a public comment process, and I know you listed the policies. Could you briefly just summarize the amendments? Just again, these are policies, and there's an engagement process, and just the changes that are being proposed.
Absolutely. So, up for amendment, the first one up for amendment is policy AEAA/GADR, which is paid legal holidays. This policy was recommended for amendment to add in Juneteenth as a paid legal holiday, reflecting the new federal holiday. Next was AFAEBA, emergency closing of schools, the procedures. We are recommending this policy for amendment to update the list of district schools, no, we updated this one, I'm sorry, but the executive summary is reflected inaccurately, to add in virtual learning as an option when we have to close schools in the case of an emergency, a weather event, or some other disaster. School board member visits to school, BBCB was recommended for amendment to revise the procedure to allow the school board member visits, the seven hours that school board members must visit schools, to be broken up into sections. Evaluation of consultants, independent contractors and service providers, is recommended for amendment to remove the requirement for a written evaluation report, and the 20-day requirement for submission to the Assistant Superintendent, because our procedures follow that all the written evaluations should cite appropriate evidence and data of the work that the contractor or the provider gave before it's recommended for a renewal. And administrative consultants, that policy was just listed with some track changes, so we recommended amendment to accept those changes and publish the finalized version of that policy. And then, ABC testing was recommended for deletion because it was posted as the bond update presentation instead of a policy. Have any questions that stem from that?
Thank you, I appreciate that. Again, I know these are board policies, and there is a public engagement process, and appreciate the time just to share with the public the changes that are being proposed.
Absolutely. So, before these come to the next board, they will be posted on the website for the public to make any additional comments or proposals they may have before the board votes on a final policy.
Great. Thank you, Attorney Moore.
Yes, sir.
All right. Next, we will move on to information-action item. All right. Next, we will move on to information action items. Um, and the first request we have is the approval of the workers' compensation insurance policy for Jackson Public Schools. Attorney Moore, this one is yours as well.
All right. The Office of the General Counsel's Department of Risk Management is recommending that the Jackson Public School District's Board of Trustees permit the Evans Agency to purchase, purchase workers' compensation insurance coverage with Bitco Insurance Company so that we can continue to have a workers' compensation policy for the school district. Um, there was an increase in this policy. Um, I would like to reflect that the rate did go down, but the amount of the policy increased because we had an uptick in payroll, and that's due to um a few things. The teacher and assistant teacher legislative pay raise that went through, as well as we had a second round of administrative raises through the district. And I do have, um, if you do have any further questions, I do have Mr. Reginald Thompson here to, um, help answering any questions the board may have.
Great. Thank you, Attorney Moore. Board members, are there any questions? I just want to lift up, um, it's my understanding, a few years ago, um, we implemented a process, I believe it is with the Evans Agency, where we had professional advice to, uh, professional advisors to advise us on the purchase of workers' compensation. Um, and uh, again, per the board materials, that recommendation came through them for this purchase. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Great. Again, it's just another example of the good use of advisors on complex transactions, so. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Dr. Luckett has moved. Ms. Thompson is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays, the motion carries. Next, we have the request to approve the agreement between Liberty University and the Jackson Public School District. And Dr. Tommy Knowles will present this information.
Good evening, Dr. Green, Board President Sebag, members of the board. The administration has submitted for approval the agreement between Liberty University and the Jackson Public School District to provide placement for student teachers and teacher interns within the Jackson Public School District.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Knowles. Board members, are there any questions? Dr. Knowles, I did ask a question. Um, it's in reference to just the, the Student Code of Conduct at Liberty University, and I want to um just hear a little bit about instances where there may be a conflict between policies or practices of a contracting partner and our core values and the steps we will take to make sure that those are not imported into the district.
Yes, sir. So um with every volunteer that we have in the, in the school district, and we treat our student teachers and teacher interns as volunteers, as a part of our process, we make sure, excuse me, that each individual uh receives a student-teacher handbook, and in that handbook, it, it contains information about how the internship will go, as well as a copy of our district staff ethics policy. We also have each volunteer to make sure that they sign a notice that states, even though they are not employees of the district, while they're working in our schools and interacting with our students, that they are to abide by our ethics code, uh, and our code of conduct, as well as our ethics policy to make sure that they're aware and that they are aware of what our expectations are as it relates to how they perform their, or complete their observations within the schools. And so um, speaking specifically to the Liberty University, uh, as they call it, their liberty way, I did review the statement on sexuality and relationships that was raised and the concerns. And what I did realize is that after further review, that that particular state or, or the code of conduct for Liberty University students is for the students themselves and how they are to behave as they attend the university. They also have within that code of conduct a personal and community respect clause that requires them regardless of race, gender, et cetera, to treat others that they come in contact with with the proper respect. And so uh, as it relates to that, and of course, uh, interacting with the individual who's making the request to do their internship within the district, they're actually uh Jackson native and also a product of Jackson Public Schools. And so um, just with full assurance and with the procedures that we have in place, we're confident that when individuals come in, they know from the beginning what their expectations are and how they're to interact as they complete their training and observations within the school district.
Thank you, Dr. Knowles. Dr. Green?
And just to further that, I really appreciate your um response and, and even looking into the um, um, their code of conduct. Just to further state, should we ever, um, whether it's through this university or any other, have a concern about a particular individual and their um politics or, or any of that as it relates to their ability to adhere to our core values and our policies' expectations? We can voice that with the university and deny that individual, correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct. Like, they're, they're, unless they agree to operate under our uh district policies and uh with the expectations that we have, they're, they don't receive a letter of approval from us. So the candidate, uh, as well as the university are aware of our core values and our uh requirement for them to follow the staff ethics even before we enter into their agreements with them. So all of that is dealt with upfront.
Thank you for, for looking into that, and I know this is an effort to continue to grow our pipeline of talent, so. And I appreciate the um additional information about being one of our homegrown students as well, that hopefully pretends for the long term.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, board members? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Mr. Figurs is second. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Next, thank you, Dr. Knowles. Next, we will move on to the request to approve the renewal agreement between Waterford Research Institute and the Jackson Public School District. And it looks like Dr. Merrick will present on behalf of Dr. Clay Scott. Dr. Merrick?
Yes, sir. Great evening to Dr. Sebag, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Green. The administration recommends the review and approval of award RFP 202221 of the pre-kindergarten intervention program to Waterford Research Institute. This is an intervention program that we've been using with pre-case students for a number of years. As requested, we do, we did present uh the data to you to show the effectiveness of the program and to show that at least uh fifty, over fifty percent of our students are reaching the targeted scale score um that is necessary for them, what we consider proficiency for them are on target to move to kindergarten. So uh, in addition to their core instruction, this has proven to be a very good program uh for our pre-kindergarten scholars.
Thank you, Dr. Merrick. Board members, are there any additional questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I shall move. Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Ms. Thompson is second. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Next, we will move on to the request, um, and actually, I'm gonna have, uh, Dr. Brigham Gibbs, I'm gonna actually ask you to run through items D through F, um, and then we'll take those all up because they're all very similar in nature.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, Board President, Dr. Green.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Office of Exceptional Education Services is presenting for approval the amended agreement between Mill Creek Schools of McGee, Mill Creek Schools of Pearl, and Canopy Cares um School due to the revision of the daily rate increase by the Mississippi Department of Education.
Thank you, Dr. Brigham Gibbs. Board members, are there any questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve items D, E, and F.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Ms. Thompson is second. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Brigham Gibbs. Next, we will invite up Mr. Burke, uh, to, Mr. Burke, to um share items G through K. Let's run through these one by one. We'll vote on each of them because unlike the previous, they're a little bit different. Actually, they're a lot different.
Yes, sir. Greetings again, board. President Sebag, Dr. Green, audience. Uh, first item.
First one is the school district's emergency management plan.
Yes, sir. Uh, the administration is recommending the approval of the Jackson Public School's School Emergency Management Plan as mandated by the Mississippi Department of Education. Uh, there are no changes to the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three plan. It is the same as last year's plan. Just in light of, just by way of uh some answers to some questions, uh, we, we have not, we have, uh, sorry, my notes, uh, in considering nationwide and worldwide, uh, worldwide events, we have identified some, some, some additional capabilities in responding to law enforcement issues in between our agencies. Uh, our campus enforcement has implemented a radio system that allows us to communicate uh with all of the first responding agencies in the area as well as statewide, so that has been something that we've, that they put in place along with aligning their uh training protocols with those agencies to make us, uh, make us more efficient if we have to respond to some sort of incident on our campuses. So those are uh the things that we've seen uh that are woven into this campus enforcement plan. Uh, management plan, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. I, I do want to stay here for a second. So, board members, I just, one of the questions that I raised was just given the incidents of uh intruders, active shooters um around the country, wanted to just see what steps were taken, what lessons are being learned from these um events. Uh, I mean, are there any, you know, in your own professional development, as we prepare for the school year, are there lessons learned coming out of events from Texas that, that we just have the unfortunate, just since we can learn from that tragedy and so that, you know, we can be as best prepared should we ever have to face an incident of that gravity?
So just from observing what uh the response in that incident, the Vivaldi incident in Texas, uh, we, there were, there are a lot of issues with the response. But Mississippi has been sort of forward-thinking over the past few years because we initially had one of those incidents in our own state. And they, they put things in place that are sort of, that, that were forward-thinking back then and, and continue to be forward-thinking. The idea that we, we coordinate, uh, and even beginning of school, we had our, uh, Dr. Green led us to have our first, uh, first responders meeting with, and, and we're engaging our community and our law enforcement, and not just law enforcement, but our, all of our first responders fire, uh, in uh ambulatory services in this conversation about how we make ourselves more uh prepared for these incidents. So we've, I think Mississippi has rules and laws that help decide whoever the first responder is, that is the person in charge on site, so those protocols are being followed and entrained with our campus enforcement in collaboration with the Sheriff's Department, with JPD, and any of the other responding agencies. So we're a little further ahead uh in, in our thinking related to that, and that is reflected in this plan.
Yeah, I will just echo and underscore the, the, the communications is the, while it's, it's not a new thing in the plan, a renewed and a deepened effort to, to communicate more clearly, well in advance of any events, to be reminded, uh, as Mr. Burke has already stated, that the first to respond is the, they're the ones in charge until, you know, someone else comes, higher ranking or whatever their thing is. Um, and, and, and that is a piece that wasn't altogether clear for me until our most recent meeting with first responders. Um, and, and as they went around the table, everyone echoed the same, that this is, this is how they do business as first responders. If you happen to be wildlife and fisheries.
Exactly.
Capital, state Capitol Police, or any of the other armed sworn officers, and you happen to be the closest and you respond, you're in charge until the next ranking, somebody shows up and there's a, there's a, a handoff there, um, which, you know, not to try to litigate or, or overanalyze what happened in Vivaldi or any other place, but, you know, outside looking in, you're wondering, how do they manage all of these different entities, all of these different people, and who, you know, acts, and all those sorts of things. So, um, so that was huge, that discussion. Our commitment to have regular, I should say periodic uh check-ins just to make sure that the things that we said we were committing to are still in place, the communications piece, the sharing of information just around our, our different facilities and some of the uh safety measures that are in place, all of those sorts of things that, um, again, are not new to the plan, but are, are pieces that we just, we can't fall down on, we can't um lose sight of. We also just discussed some opportunities to improve um, uh, our, um, our safety and security. And so, um, you know, in addition to, and a doubling down on some of the things that are already known and, and already expected of us, just the discussion of how do we expand, how do we improve um, um, in various ways, resourcing and, and practices, protocols.
And, and is the training, is some of it, is, all of that, it sounds great. And, and then there's, there's the decision-making in the moment of a crisis, and so do we have training in place where we can effectively test what, what's discussed and on paper? Because sometimes it's, it's reps and, and again, none of us know till we're there either. That's the other reality.
So yes, there, there is training, um, you know, there are differing opinions as to what that training should look like. In some places, you see full-on re, um.
Reenactment?
Reenactments.
Enactments.
Right, or enactments of, of, um, of those crises, which we've opted not to do with children and staff and all of that. But, but there are drills, there are, um, our practices with the school community, and there are required um trainings, annual trainings, or is it biannual?
I think it's biannual.
Um, twice.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, required trainings for our staff to be reminded of some very basic um expectations for what, what to do in a, especially in a, a, um, active shooter incident.
Thank you.
And the training, I should also say, and the training is, um, is required through a particular um, um, provider, and so it's standardized, um, so we don't have concerns about the quality of training that this group gets versus this group, or is.
Another. Thank you. Any other questions, board members? If, if not, is there a motion to approve?
I shall move. Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Mr. Figurs has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Uh, next, um, we have the request to approve the Borough's Bus Company Transportation Bus. Mr. Burke?
Yes. We missed one, yeah.
Which, which one did I miss?
H.
Oh, the monthly financials. Um, okay, uh, well, let's move on. Thank you. Uh, the request to approve the monthly financial report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thought you were trying to trick me up there for.
No, I just, I can do that, I don't know, clearly.
Yes, it's, it's okay. All right. So, uh, the administration recommends that the board approve the monthly financial report for the month ending August thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two. I wa- I would like to note on here, there, I've sort of kind of changed this around a little bit. I hope you, um, because I'm, I'm trying to help you engage more with the financials. Uh, that is a very important uh thing for you to be able to do. Uh, I've added page numbers to each of the pages, um, so at the bottom of these reports, in the future, you will see sort of in big letters, page numbers, as opposed to those little bitty numbers that break up each section. So that'll help you find the information that I'm referring to uh in the report. Also, there was, um, there was an additional sheet. Sort of color-coded. I don't know if you got it, and it was color-coded. But this is sort of something that I use to manage costs month to month as we, as we, we walk through. But the difficulty with the financial reports that you're getting, they are month-end reports, so they're backwards-looking. This is something that I run, um, and you'll see at the bottom, it's broken into months, and this gives you, gives me a quick, and hopefully will help you see a quick comparison to last year's expenditures related to cost groups, salaries, and fringes being the top two, the one-hundreds, two-hundreds, uh, and the others being the, the things that we have a little bit tighter control on in, in the three-hundred through nine-hundred groups. And again, I'm, I'm covering this, and so if you have a question, feel free to call me. I'd be more than happy to, to log on with you and walk you through this, but this is something I share with Dr. Green in our check-ins monthly just to make sure that we are comfortable with where we are in terms of personnel costs. That is our biggest expenditure from district maintenance. It's, um, almost ninety percent of that money in district maintenance is, is going to our personnel, so if we can control that cost, we will have a better indicator for how our financial position will be throughout the rest of the year. So I'll be, if you have any questions about these reports, if you'll, um... So I'll be, if you have any questions about these reports, if you're working through Dr. Seback or indirectly, it doesn't matter, or Dr. Green, you can shoot those to me, and I'll be more than happy to tweak these things to make them more understandable for your use.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Were there any highlights from the executive summary? Actually, could you just run through some of the highlights from the executive summary on the financial report?
So yes. District maintenance, any fund balance as of August 31st was $11,209,000. This is approximately 2.7 million lower than in the previous year. But we were, at this point, I ran this report, we were closing the books. We've actually closed that gap. We're set to, we actually have closed our books for the year. So next year's, next month's report will reflect that. But we're actually two, and I, little, about 2.7 million dollars added to our fund balance. So that's pretty exciting news. It will go back into district maintenance at the end of the year. Child nutrition continues to, to have a significant balance, and we're, we're looking at some ways to spend that money. It's not unusual for them to have a large balance. We're coming out of a pandemic. We didn't have a lot of the normal operational costs related to food, because a lot of students didn't eat, so they're carrying a balance, so we'll, we'll sort of develop some ways. And he'll spend some of that down this year over the course of the year. Section, on page nine, elementary and secondary schools emergency fund, which is the S, ESRA two, has negative balance. But again, that's, that's understandable because those are reimbursement-based funding situations. So they will, they have to expend, then submit for reimbursement, then we'll get that money back. But that's why it's important for district maintenance to have a healthy balance, so we can cover those expenditures until that money comes in. So budget status, at this point, at August 31st, we had spent roughly 8.8% of our, had received 8.8% of our revenues, and we had expended 11.74% of what we had budgeted. That's a little head, but it's, again, not unusual because our real revenues, Avalorm, doesn't really start coming in until December, January, February months. So that'll catch up. But we are trying to keep that expenditure level sort of controlled, so we're don't, we don't outstrip revenue collection by too much. Bank reconciliations is on page 25 through 28, and you'll see those, bank reconciliations have been caught up in current. And then from a cash flow standpoint, as of August 31st, the ending cash balance in just the district maintenance fund was $1,531,629 as compared to the prior month, prior year, which was 1.6 million. This amount is, so that amount somewhere about 6.85% lower than what it in prior year. But again, that was at the end of July. It will probably catch up this month. What impacted cash flow? We had 16.6 million in expenses compared to 15.1 million in August of 2021. This amount is 9.77% higher than the prior year. So again, controlling the expenditures, some of that is related to the pay increase, some of it is related to higher cost of fuel, and some of the electricity, those types of things. So we'll, we'll keep our eye on that. But the hot, real highlight for this is we're cautious but optimistic, and we are, we are exercising a lot of control, looking at every expenditure that comes out of district maintenance.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
You're welcome.
Board members, I, I really would encourage anyone who's got questions about the budget or wants to deepen their knowledge of the budget to take Mr. Burke up on his invitation. We had an opportunity to just talk through his philosophy around budgeting, and, and you can see it even in the presentation, it's, I'm looking forward to working with you as we develop the budget. We'll do this collaboratively. We do have some, we are gonna have some difficult decisions to make as a board as we move into planning for next year. And so, all the more reason to spend time this fall, learning more about it, if that's a desire. And, and again, I'm looking forward to working with you on the, on the budget.
Forward to it.
Is there a motion to approve the financial report?
I shall move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Next, we have the request to approve the Burroughs Bus Company Transportation Bus Fleet. Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. The administration via the Transportation Department is requesting approval to purchase four buses from Burroughs Bus Company. These buses will be purchased using ESRA funds. The current fleet is somewhere around, well, it's 167 buses. They currently have 17 buses that are not operable, and thus purchasing these four buses will assist in replenishing our fleet and provide better service to our students and scholars. We're also have applied for a clean bus grant that will, if we're awarded sometime late October, early November, will provide us funding for 25 new electric, fully electric buses and the charging stations to go along with them. We're actually having a meeting, that was a collaboration between Finance and Operations Office, David Schumer, the grants manager, did a yeoman's job of getting that application submitted in like three days, along with Snyder Electric, which offered their expertise in submitting it for, for free of charge. So we'll have a meeting tomorrow to talk about the next steps because there is a lot that goes into providing electrical, electric buses, the capacity, making sure we have the capacity, make sure we locate those buses in an optimum area, identify where they can be utilized. So that'll be a lot of discussion, and you'll see more, hopefully we'll hear more about it as we determine we have the grant.
That's exciting. Thank you for that update. Board members, is there a motion to approve the, and just to be clear to you, just one other thing I noticed in this proposal, these are actually wheelchair-accessible buses that we're purchasing with what's on the docket tonight.
Yes, yes, yes.
If that's correct.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
Shall move.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Mrs. Thompson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Next, we have the request to approve the engagement letter between Butler Snow for 16 section property in Jackson Public Schools. Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Recommended action is the administration requests the Board of Trustees to approve the agreement between Jackson Public Schools and Butler Snow for legal services related to 16 section properties. This is, so when I came to the district, one of the, one of the things with 16 section, I asked about an agreement, who was our attorney? I thought it was Attorney Turner, but I found out, no, she doesn't do that. So I thought it was in-house counsel, and that, they don't do that. So I was like, okay, well, who was it? Well, it turned out it was David Anders. David Anders is, is, is an expert in the field, understandably. But he, this relationship goes back to when he was with Bernini. So they were unable to locate an actual agreement for his hours. So I asked for something, and he's now since moved to Butler Snow. So that relationship sort of moved with him to Butler Snow. I know we've engaged with him on the Lake Haiko situation, so that withstanding, notwithstanding that relationship, he's all, according to Mr. Davis and, and the people who've worked with him, he's always provided timely responses on what they're trying to do. Now, with that, with all that said, we need to, if we choose, if you take this recommendation, we're moving in that direction. But again, as we move forward, I do want to try to figure out a way to keep some of that in-house to, to lower the cost related to 16 section administration. A lot of that is, a lot of that is boilerplate template leasing, leases developed by the Secretary of State's office, so we can utilize their free advice. We can also utilize in-house counsel to review that. And if it's something that rises beyond that, then we can consider his services at that time. But I do think it was important to have something more recent signed by the superintendent and approved by this board that we could point to as the basis of his, his costs. So that said, that's the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Board members, are there any questions? Thank you. One thing I will say, this is a one-year agreement, is that correct?
I think it's.
Terminable on like 30 days.
You're right, yeah. It has a termination clause, so.
Okay. I would just, part of the reason I asked that question is, you made some recommendations or opined on some ways that we could improve on how we manage the 16 section leases, and I, I think particularly as we're looking at ways to cut costs.
Exactly.
You mentioned in-house counsel. We also have board counsel, who I know has 16 section land experience, and so really would like to see us explore all of our options next year as well.
Absolutely. And that is, so in-house counsel will become the first line of review. That's, that's the whole plan. But again, we did not have an agreement, and I, I didn't feel comfortable with us continuing down that line without having something in writing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burke.
You're welcome.
And I will just, Attorney Moore and I had a conversation. The other thing that we did do is rather than allowing just their automatic rate increases, we did cap whatever his fee is now. So if they want any rate increase other than it automatically going into effect, they now have to come back to the board and ask for any rate increase. So that will help at least in continuing contracts.
Exactly. Thank you for that, too. I forgot about that.
Thank you, Attorney Turner. That's an important flag as well. Is there a motion to approve, Board?
I shall move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Dr. Luckett has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Burke.
You're welcome.
Next, we will move on to the request, the approval of the, the, request to approve the agreement between the City of Jackson Police Department and Jackson Public Schools. And, Mr. Burke, this one is yours as well.
Yes, sir. The administration recommends renewing an existing agreement between the City of Jackson, the Jackson Police Department and, Jackson Police Department and Jackson Public Schools for one year effective September 1st, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Yes, sir.
For 2022?
I mean, 2022.
23?
Yeah, I've been here, I've been up here a long time.
That's okay. All right. Board members, are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I shall move.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Dr. Luckett has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Thank you.
Appreciate all of your work on these things. Next, we have the consent agenda items general. All the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the Board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, the Board members, is there a motion to approve?
I shall move.
Second.
Mrs. Thompson has moved. Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda item for Personnel, Finance. Did I miss Finance?
No, we just did Finance.
General, okay, I thought I said general. Finance. We've all had an opportunity to review the materials in advance. Is there a motion to approve?
Shall move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The motion carries. Personnel, right? I just want to make sure. Okay. General?
We just did.
We just did General.
I just did General.
We did Finance and General.
We've done Finance, General, so we're on Personnel, is that right?
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Moving faster than my script, which I appreciate, by the way. Okay, I did have a question in here. There was, there was a, within the Personnel Board members, there's a request for an expert citizen license. Could someone, that was the first time I had seen that in the Board package. Is there someone that could speak to this position?
Yeah, Dr. Cormack's gonna join.
Okay, thank you. Great question.
It is. Good evening, Board members. Dr. Green. An expert citizen license is one class of a license which allows for community individuals who have a bachelor's degree and who have experience within a particular area, but may not be trained as teachers. And so, as an example, someone who has worked as a church choir director might be, might receive an expert citizen license. The requirements for that, again, a bachelor's degree, and then they submit several recommendations that attest to their professional experience. We also see that happen sometimes within the Career Development Center, where there are trades, where individuals may lack a particular certification, so it gives them an opportunity to earn those certifications, but to work with scholars in this particular narrow class of educators.
Great. And so, is this, is, it's another tool that we have to fill vacancies effectively?
It is, yes. And so, it's a relatively narrow group, you know, we do want to ensure that as many of our educators go through the traditional pathways, but is an additional tool in our toolkit to help provide for educators to, to fulfill vacancies in those critical areas.
Great. Thank you for sharing that, that background. It was interesting to see in the packet. All right, Board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items for Personnel?
Shall move.
Second.
Mrs. Thompson has moved. Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The motion carries. Next, Board members, we do have an executive session tonight, so is there a consideration to hold the executive session, to close the meeting, to consider the need to go into executive session?
I move we close the meeting to consider executive session.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Ms. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for being with us this evening.
Oh, thank you.